Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September meeting of the planning and zoning Board. I'd like to ask Joyce to ask everyone to stand up, and we'll plug things in the flag. Plug things to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Oklahoma Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the filing manner posted on the bulletin board in the Vern Clark's office and emailed to the Metro Expect and the Courier Post. May I have your roll call, please? Chairwoman Clegham.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Here.
Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Ms. Farmer and Ms. Abson. Mr. Roson.
Here.
Mayor is excused. Councilman Reneri is excused.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Kathy Walker is excused.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
And Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Thank you very much. The first order of business will be the approval of the minutes from the July 27th meeting. We did not have any applications on the docket for August, so there was not an August meeting. Are there any questions or concerns, additions, subtractions on the 27th of July minutes? With that, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Vannella and Ms. Gushen, all in favor?
Aye.
Under old business, Regulation 22-16, Mr. Rowan.
Yes, this is the applicant Francis Accardo, property located at 132 Knight Avenue, block 147.5. It lies in the R1 residential zoning district. The applicant came in and saw certain bulk variances to his property, which were approved. I won't go over each one, but they are set forth in the resolution, and that was approved at our July meeting. Do you just need a motion to approve?
I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
I'll make a motion as read.
Second.
Mr. Vannella and Ms. Gushen, may I have your roll call, please? Chairwoman Clegham.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Abstain.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd, are you here?
I abstain.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Abstain.
Let's tell us the show up then.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
We've got four. Second. Okay, thank you. Next order of business is Resolution 22-17, Mr. Rowan.
This is application of Albert and Karen Hastings, 70 North Oakland Avenue, block 60, block 17, which property lies in our R1 residential zoning district. This was a application for a minor subdivision with certain bulk variances. The subdivision is going to be like the, and not part of the, and I won't go over each individual bulk variance granted, but this was approved, I heard, and approved at our July 2022 meeting.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve, by Resolution 22-17, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Vannella and Ms. Gushen, may I have your roll call, please? Chairwoman Clegham.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Abstain.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Abstain.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Abstain.
And Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's another one.
Steve, give him a second.
Yeah, I believe, Madam Secretary, I believe the application, A.S., the A.S. Properties LLC, has been withdrawn by the applicant for this evening.
That's not on the agenda.
Correct, I was told by--
Yeah, I said that even though we were doing it, yeah, it's not on, it's on the agenda.
Well--
We're taking it off, it's being withdrawn. I spoke to the attorney, Keith, what's his, Trimble number? Yeah, Trimble.
Okay.
And he's acknowledging it, and they're gonna put it into a new, new application.
Okay, so we don't need to do a resolution?
No.
Very, very good, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay, so the next order of business, when a new business is, application 2207, if you folks would like to come up to the microphone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to be seen, thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Damian Del Duca, and I'm an attorney with the law firm Del Duca Lewis, and I'm here for the applicant. If I could just ask Brian or one of us on our team to set you these lots and get other exhibits out, and then I'll, Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll give you an introduction and overview of who we are and why we're here, and then we have some planned testimony, and we can swear to witnesses once I do that, okay?
Absolutely.
So, the applicant before you tonight is 10 East Clements Bridge Road LLC, which is an entity that's under contract to purchase the subject property, which is 10-20 East Clements Bridge Road here in Runnymede. That's block 112, block 12, 12.01 and 12.04. That LLC, just for the record, is owned by four individuals, John Nancy Subasas, Matthew Holcomb, and Alyssa Pizzo. The latter two of whom are here with me tonight, is my clients. That entity, as I said, is under contract to purchase the property. We're here tonight for conditional use approval for a new cannabis dispensary in Runnymede at the location that I just identified, that will be called Cottonmouth Dispensary. Cottonmouth Dispensary LLC is the entity that owns the cannabis retail license that we'll talk about, and that entity will be a tenant at this location, and that entity, Cottonmouth Dispensary LLC, will operate this cannabis dispensary. That entity is owned by the same, of three of the same four people, John Subasas, Matthew Holcomb, and Alyssa Pizzo. Cottonmouth, which is how I'll refer to them, or Cottonmouth Dispensary, proposes a recreational retail cannabis dispensary. And as I know you know, and everyone in this room knows, cannabis is new in New Jersey, okay? And New Jersey has legalized the sale of certain cannabis products, and what we propose here is a retail dispensary. Cottonmouth has what's called a classified retail dispensary license, a conditional license that they obtained from the state of New Jersey, and they propose to site that license at the subject location, which is just across Clements Bridge Road. The site was a CDF some time ago, it was recently a law firm. The plan is to purchase the building and to take the entire building. The building is 8,980 square feet, approximately just under 5,000 square feet, we believe, roughly half of that will be used for retail, the retail operations, and the rest will be storage related to the retail operations in the Cottonmouth business. We're going to submit a floor plan and other plans to you as part of site plan approval, which I'll talk about in a minute, but that's the essential plan. The property is in the commercial zone, C-zone, however, there's an overlay, has a long name, it's the cannabis establishment's overlay zoning district, I believe. And there's a special ordinance that Runnymede adopted within the last year or so, section 395-26, and in that ordinance, the borough of Runnymede has decided that this property is appropriate for a retail cannabis dispensary so long as it meets certain conditions. It lists a retail cannabis dispensary as a conditional use. What is a conditional use? A conditional use is a term in the land use law that means that the town can adopt an ordinance, which it has, that says a use is a permitted use so long as it meets certain stated specific conditions set forth in the ordinance. And Runnymede has adopted such an ordinance and has stated specific conditions set forth in section 26 of its ordinance. And the applicant's obligation when there's a conditional use is to come before a planning board and to demonstrate that we meet the conditions set forth in the ordinance, and if so, it's a permitted use. We've applied for conditional use approval. Now, as some of you are probably aware, but for everyone's benefit, a conditional use application isn't an opportunity for the applicant to convince you as a board that this is an appropriate use for this location. That decision's already been made by Runnymede, it's been made by virtue of the ordinance that was adopted, and Runnymede adopted, in other words, a very thorough ordinance, I might add, many conditions had had to be met, and my job tonight is to demonstrate to you that this applicant meets all of those conditions. And if so, the board is obligated by law to say, yes, the conditions have been stated, therefore this is a conditional use, that satisfies the condition, and therefore it's a permitted use. Now, as I mentioned, we're changing the use of this building, most recently from an office, professional office, to a retail cannabis dispensary. That implicates site plan approval, which as you know is a series of plans, it shows existing conditions and any changes that are proposed to the site. We, in our application, asked the board to waive any site plan review because of the limited nature of the work that's proposed at the site. We received Mr. Bach's review letter, which is dated September 23rd, and in his letter, Mr. Bach suggests, or excuse me, recommends to the board that you not grant the site plan waiver, and that you ask the applicant to submit plans showing existing conditions and propose changes to the site, and recommends not granting our request for site plan waiver. We received that letter, we reviewed it, I've actually discussed it personally with Mr. Bach, and the applicant has agreed that they will submit a site plan and submit it to this board and ask you to grant site plan approval. So we're withdrawing the request for site plan waiver, asking you to just focus tonight on a conditional use application, and we'll table site plan until your October meeting. In the meantime, and the plans are almost finished, we'll submit plans next week to Ms. Pinto, Mr. Bach, and all of you, site plan related material, so that you get a better idea of the changes that are proposed, and at your October meeting, we could talk about site plan related issues like parking, circulation, buffering, changes to the building, lighting, et cetera. So tonight, we're here for conditional use approval only, so I wanted to make that clear because it certainly limits the scope of what we seek tonight. I heard someone behind me yell "traffic." For a conditional use application, traffic, even if anyone on the board perceives that there's going to be a lot of traffic associated with this, which by the way, our traffic engineer will address tonight in a summary way in more detail upon the site plan. The conditions set forth in your conditional use ordinance don't have any type of traffic threshold, so that's not one of the conditions. However, I understand that everyone is worried about traffic in our worlds, and although that's not germane to a conditional use application here, we'll have our traffic engineer, Andrew Faranda from Traps Char Associates, provide a brief overview of his investigation into the traffic situation, and he'll provide more detail on that at the time of site plan. We'll submit a report related to traffic at the time of site plan. So I'm sorry for the somewhat long overview, but I wanted to go into that detail because I thought it was important to let you know the limited nature of what we need and what we turn for site plan. I'd like to introduce our team, we have a large group here. Matthew Holcomb, Matthew, can you raise your hand, please, or stand up?
Damian, I really apologize, but just as a matter of housekeeping, Mr. Rowan, I don't believe we officially seated Ms. Burke for a Ms. Farmer. Ms. Burke is our alternate, and she is sitting in for Ms. Farmer, so I think we need to put that on the record that we are seating her. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, yeah, let's say everybody, Damian, everybody that's want to testify tonight or be here for the applicant and our engineer, if you'd all stand and raise your right hand. We put group swearings instead of individual. Folks, do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. So what I'll do is give everyone's name for the record, so we know who swears back, so everybody on the board can see. So Matthew Holcomb, Joe Allen, Brian Cleary, our civil engineer, Tim Hookin, our architect, Andrew Faranda, our traffic engineer, Sam Agresta, our planner, and Susanna Short, who is a cannabis consultant. Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I'm sure the board will have questions, and we'll answer all of them to the best of our ability. I have about five or six witnesses. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with all of you, is through all the testimony, because I think some of the questions you may have will be answered by later witnesses, we'll try to be concise and efficient. Obviously, if you'd like to ask questions, you'll do that, but we do have a pretty comprehensive presentation, but I am, again, focusing on the conditional use aspect, deferring site plan to a later day.
Thank you. Thank you.
So hearing your questions, I'll ask our first witness, who's Matthew Holcomb, to step forward.
I'm sorry, Matthew, what is your capacity, what is your capacity here?
What was that?
What is your capacity here?
I'm the general manager of Cottonmouth Dispensary.
Thank you.
And Mr. Holcomb, were you present during my introductory comments?
Yes, I was.
Were they accurate?
Yes, they were.
Okay. So Cottonmouth Dispensary LLC will be a tenant at this location?
Correct.
And is that the entity that will operate the dispensary?
Correct.
And will you be one of the individuals responsible for the operation and oversight of this dispensary?
Yes, I will be overseeing daily operations.
Okay. Before I go any further, I forgot one thing, I have some exhibits I'd like to hand out, and that'll help us you can hear the testimony. Just hold on one minute, Mr. Holcomb, please. So, the exhibits that I've just handed out, there are only three. Exhibit A1, Exhibit A1 is an aerial photograph showing the site, y'all are all familiar with the site, right across Clements Bridge Road. Exhibit A2 is a survey prepared by JTS Engineers and Land Surveyors, last November, September 6, 22.
Excuse me.
That's an updated version of the survey that was submitted with the application. And Exhibit A3 is an area, excuse me, a proposed elevation for the building, it shows the existing building on the bottom and the proposed elevation on the top. There'll be more discussion about this at site plan, but we wanted to show you the improvements. This is dated September 28th, prepared by the pedicure, specifically Mr. Hookin. So those are our three. Do you happen to have any more?
Well, if there's any left, I have to pass it right now.
Okay.
Here, I got mine.
Thanks. So those are our primary exhibits, there'll be a few others.
I, I, I don't need one.
Okay.
Yeah. You want to--
I have one for the file.
Yeah, we got one. Actually, two more.
Okay. So sorry for that sidebar, thank you. So, Mr. Holcomb, back to your testimony. So Cottonmouth Dispensary is the entity that will operate this facility, correct?
Yes, it is.
Now, we submitted with the application a copy of the cannabis, retail cannabis license that you obtained from the state, correct?
Right.
And is that a conditional license that says that you'll be able to operate this dispensary subject to meeting the conditions set forth in that license?
Yes, so that document determined that Cottonmouth Dispensary is legally on condition to operate the cannabis facility.
And I marked that license, which is dated July 13th, 2022, as Exhibit A4, is that a true copy of the license?
Correct, it's the final agency decision.
Okay, thanks. Is it correct that once Cottonmouth meets the conditions of the approval in that license, that the license will convert to a regular annual license that will allow you to conduct retail sales of certain cannabis products?
This is correct.
Okay. And what does a class V cannabis retailer sell?
As a class V cannabis retailer, we will retail a variety of forms of cannabis products, including flour, pre-rolls, edibles, cartridges, concentrates, and tinctures. We will also carry a variety of cannabis accessories, including wraps and grinders, and we will also sell Cottonmouth merchandise, including stickers, and hoodies, and shirts, and hats.
Okay, and is that typical for a classified cannabis retailer?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And are you aware that cannabis retailer is a conditional use under Runnymede's ordinances?
Yes.
And are you aware that section 395-26 sets forth those conditions?
Correct, yes.
I'm gonna go through those conditions in order to demonstrate whether we satisfy those conditions. The first says that class V retailers shall meet all requirements for license or uphold the appropriate license issued by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission of the state of New Jersey. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is that Exhibit A4 that I just marked in evidence?
Yes.
Okay, and there are conditions of that license which you must meet.
Must meet.
Correct, yes. The second condition, C2 in the ordinance, is that no cannabis establishment shall permit onsite consumption of cannabis or cannabis-related products, including no onsite sales and consumption of alcohol or tobacco products. Will you comply with that condition?
We will comply.
So people can buy cannabis products at Cottonmouth, but they can't--
They cannot.
--induce or reuse those products on the premises?
Correct.
No one go outside and smoke a joint?
Correct.
Okay. The third condition is that no outside storage of any cannabis, cannabis products, or cannabis-related materials shall be permitted. Is it correct that the applicant will not store any product outside its building?
Correct.
Is it also true that the state has very strict laws and regulations relating to how product must be stored inside of it?
That's correct.
And will you meet all those requirements?
Yes, we will.
Condition 4, specifically C4, the ordinance states that hours of any retail facility shall be limited from 9:00 AM until 9:00 PM, seven days a week. Will you comply with that condition?
Yes, we will.
Condition C5, actually, I'm gonna skip that for another reason. Condition D1 states that all cannabis establishments, particularly classes, including class V, shall provide detailed information on odor control for these sites, this will include air treatment systems and other material. Now, there are different classes of licenses, right? Class V is only one of them.
Right.
And that condition relates to classes 1 through 5, correct?
Correct.
Now, is it correct that we're not going to emit any odor from this site because no one's going to be using product on this?
That is correct.
Condition D2 states that all cannabis establishments shall provide for noise mitigation features designed to minimize disturbance from machinery, processing, or packaging operations, loading, and other noise generating equipment or machinery. All licensed facilities must operate within applicable state testicle requirements. First of all, is it correct that you will operate within all applicable state testicle requirements?
That is correct.
Is it also correct that your use will not generate, will not conduct, use any machinery, processing, or packaging operations, loading, or other noise generating equipment?
That is correct.
Okay. So you won't be doing any packaging, or manufacturing, or growing on this site?
Correct.
You're only gonna bring a product and sell it retail?
Correct.
Okay. And loading's gonna be from small vans into the back of the facility?
At larger, so to the size of the cargo van, or the delivery vehicles are small.
Condition D3 is that loitering, disruption, too, or obstruction of a free passage of persons or vehicles in the immediate vicinity of the property shall be considered unlawful. Are you going to permit anyone to loiter, or disrupt, or obstruct the free passage of people or vehicles in the immediate vicinity?
No, we will not.
Is it your expectation that people will buy the product and take the product and use it somewhere off-site?
Yes, it is.
And will you prohibit people from using the product onsite?
Certainly will.
And you understand that's an requirement of the law that will be enforced?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Condition E1 states that all cannabis operations, such as retail, shall be conducted within the building, no operation shall be conducted outside.
We will comply.
Correct.
Correct.
Those are all the conditions relating to your testimony, there were a few that I didn't address, everyone, okay, I'll address those with my other witnesses. Now, how many employees do you expect, if things go the way you expect, to be working during your peak hour?
So during peak hour, we expect to have roughly, at the most, 11 employees.
And give us an idea of who the, what roles those employees will fill, what types of employees will they--
So all those 11 positions, five of them will be management level positions, and this includes myself as general manager, we have assistant general manager, we have two store managers, as well as a security manager. And then for the staff positions, there's six of them, we have five bug tenders, which are the people actually making the final sales, and we have one social media manager.
Okay. So if I came into your dispensary and I wanted to buy cannabis--
Right.
Walk everyone through how that experience will happen at this facility?
So in front of our doors, we have our security officer, he will check your ID before letting you into the premises. Once you're let into the building, you're gonna be in a waiting area. In this waiting area, you can approach the front desk, the receptionist will scan your ID, so that's the second ID check, the scan there. They let you into where the cannabis sales take place, into the facility, there's a cannabis bar, which displays a variety of products, there's kiosks around the cannabis bar where customers can place their orders, and once you place an order, you get in line, you wait for a bug tender to call you up, and once they call you up, you present your ID for a third and final time, and then you receive the product, and you leave through the same door to enter.
And is it correct that all customers will be required to enter through the main entrance?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Is it also correct that the state of New Jersey, specifically the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, has an extensive set of regulations that tells you exactly how you have to operate this business?
Yes, that is correct.
And you understand you're bound by those rules?
Correct.
And one of those rules is a doctor, is that you have to notify law enforcement and neighbors within 100 feet with the name and address of the managers of your facility, so that those neighbors and law enforcement can notify you if there are any concerns or issues?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I know you don't have an exact floor plan yet, and that will be submitted, but was I correct that approximately 5,000 square feet will be a retail portion?
That's roughly--
Okay, what will the rest of the building be used to?
The rest will be used for, that's still up in the air, I can't give an actual answer on that, I have to consult the rest of the team for that.
Okay, but you'll store product in the back--
Products will be stored, they will be evolved, yes.
And is it correct that there are specific regulations as to how the product must be stored?
Yes, there is.
Can you give everyone an overview of how that works and what the requirements are?
So in the storage areas, that cannot be accessible to the public, only employees will have access to these areas, it's kind of a cage room that acts as a vault for the cannabis material, for our supply.
So, can a customer walk in after showing their ID several times as you described and get access to the storage area?
Absolutely not.
Okay. What type of, you mentioned the types of trucks for deliveries, right?
Right.
Basically FedEx-type trucks, or smaller?
Small, yeah, right.
Okay.
Cargo van size at the largest.
Cargo van size, I'm sorry, I misspoke. How often do you expect to get deliveries?
We're mapping our inventory out to receive two deliveries per week.
All right, what type of controls are in place for receiving deliveries of this product?
So deliveries are only coming through the back door that is secured and alarmed.
Okay, and does that delivery person have to show some sort of ID to get in, what controls are there?
Yes, they do. Their ID will be submitted.
And that's under video surveillance at all times?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Trash. Now, I assume you have regular trash a lot of retailers have, and cannabis-related waste, correct?
Correct.
How do you, how will cannabis waste be?
So cannabis-related waste, we're actually contracting out to a cannabis waste disposal company. The way that they handle this is they grind up unusable cannabis, and they mix that with inner material, where the cannabis, the resulting mixture is unrecognizable, unusable, and just to clarify, that's not done in-house, this will not be done in-house, this is being contracted out.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Holcomb. Unless anyone has any questions for him, or he can answer them whenever he wants, I was gonna have our next witness come up, Joe Allen, who's gonna talk a little bit more about security related issues.
Do you have a quick question regarding odor control? There was a representative that it was all prepackaged, is there gonna be any loose cannabis? Are you gonna be pulling--
There will not be any loose cannabis in the facility.
So you will not have cannabis over the vavus for everything's prepackaged?
Everything is prepackaged, prepared items, the wholesalers, manufacturers.
And then you receive enclosed packages?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Holcomb, I just had a quick question on the, on the trash. I know that you have an EP Henry style enclosure there now on the property with dumpsters, which is a very, it's a very nice enclosure, that I'm gonna work for the store of trash, but let's get back to the cannabis trash, how is that gonna be picked up, what's going on with-- We have, I will, I'll preface my, my question with, Mayor and I just had a conversation today where we have a Med Express type of facility, that I looked at their trash enclosure, and I walked by it, and there's just, there's just hazmat stuff blown over, there's gloves, I sent pictures to the code enforcement, what, I mean, is that going to be--
Thank you very much.
Is that going to be picked up by a separate entity and taken out of your facility? On a truck, or what's gonna transpire?
Yeah, so there is a secure area within the facility for cannabis waste.
Inside?
What's that?
Inside the facility?
Yes, inside of the facility.
Okay.
It will not be stored outside, and the third party company that comes to pick it And then the third-party company that comes to pick it up, the retriever, will retrieve it and in the facility, safe and sound.
So the cannabis waste will not go in the closure that exists?
No, no.
Only the non-cannabis, typical ways?
Correct.
And the cannabis waste will be secure as required by the regulations?
Correct.
And how many times do you plan on having your regular trash picked up a week?
We should, we should have the same amount of trash as any typical retail business. We will comply with local regulations.
You have a relatively small dumpster there right now. I don't, I don't know how much a cannabis dispensary generates as far as trash is concerned, but I do have a concern with the blinding facilities of, you know, just trash just being overflowing and blowing around. And I mean, I would hope that you would make it a point to, if you see that you need to get picked up more than once, more than twice a week, that you facilitate that because, you know, just like I said, I walked by there today, and there's just, there's blue and pink gloves all over the place. It's just disgusting.
Of course, of course. You keep up on everything.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's right next to your front entrance, too. It's right there. You know what I mean? So I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, Madam?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can answer this, or somebody else will, but you're regulated in the near, in a regulated industry, and you're going to have to ensure that you're meeting those regulations. So, you know, are you going to be subjected to audits?
Yes.
Internal audits within the company?
Yes.
Who is conducting them, and how often?
I would like to refer you to someone else on my team because I don't know the...
No problem.
So we'll ask Mr. Allen to come up, and then I'll get your answer to that question.
Could you explain cannabis waste if there wasn't any cannabis cannabis?
Sure. Just so you know, there's a portion of the meeting for the public to ask questions. So what we'll do is we're going to hear testimony from all of the applicants and the professionals. And then there'll be a separate portion of the meeting so that anyone from the public can ask any professional or any of the applicants any questions whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, sir? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
So can you just introduce yourself, please? I want to know who you are.
I'm Joe Zabala, I'm the owner of Sonic Troll Security Company. We're providing all the electronic security.
Okay, I was going to ask, what's your role in this project?
We're going to provide all the electronic security for nighttime security, daytime security, cameras throughout the interior, fully covered on the exterior, plus access control to limit access into the facility.
Okay, and what's, briefly, what's your professional background?
I've been in the business since 1974, a tech salesman. I've been with Sonic Troll since 1981. In 1999, I started my own dealership. I eventually took over the franchise that I used to work for. I've been running my own business for 22 years through number 85 National.
Okay. So is it correct that Cotton Mountain Dispensary prepared and submitted a standard operating procedures, safety and security plan for this application?
Yes, they did.
Did you assist in preparing that along with others?
Yes.
And has the police chief approved that plan, subject to a final inspection facility after it's built out?
Yes, he has.
Okay. Can you provide us with an overview of the security and access system that you're helping provide?
Sure. Any crew member in the building will have door contacts of who we know when somebody opens the door. As required by the state, motion detectors will be placed on the inside, protecting around the vaults. One of the unique things about Sonic Troll is we have an audio device that detects intrusion, so we can pick up intrusions earlier. So if someone's chopping through the wall or through the roof, we get earlier detection. We're not waiting for them to get into the building and get picked up by the motion sensor. The motions for us are actually a backup. So it allows us to hear what's taking place in the building and verify the alarm dispatch law enforcement, and tell them exactly what's taking place while your voices, glass breaking, chopping, and hammering. So it's more of an intelligent response. And with the lower roof, somebody could get up on the roof very easily and not be seen by anyone and be coming through the roof. We'll hear that much earlier. On the hold-up alarms, we'll have hold-up buttons at key desks, which they haven't been located yet on set of planes, but we'll have hold-up buttons strategically placed for daytime, so if there's a problem and they need law enforcement, they hit the button. It sends an silent alarm to our monitoring station. It also turns on the audio sensor so that we can hear what's happening. Again, update law enforcement so that when they respond, they know what they're getting into when they walk in the door.
Okay, so will there be alarms and video surveillance at all times?
We will have, alarms will not be on during the day. Once the first person arrives, they'll turn off the security system. Hold-up buttons will be operational 24/7. Access control will be put on the main front door, the back door, as well as interior doors and getting into the vaults. Certain people with the correct card or file will be able to get into certain doors. Cameras, for protection, we will have cameras in the far parking lot where the grass is and the poles. We have multisensor cameras that are very high-definition cameras to be able to see almost anything you want to see with the cameras. All four corners of the building will have multi-head cameras. There'll be four cameras in each one of these assemblies, so you'll be able to see every inch of the outside of the building. Once you're on the inside, the vault will have camera coverage at the back door so we can see who's coming and going for deliveries, as well as the main lobby, so you can see who's coming and going, verifying that people are doing the right thing, making sure they're checking IDs, all that with the recording. Recording device will be in the building, locked up in the back room, for about 30 days of storage locally. Then for New Jersey, we're going to be required to send it out to the cloud for additional days of storage.
When you say New Jersey, does that, does that mean you comply with state regulations?
Yes.
So will this be a state-of-the-art system?
Yeah. We do it every day. We have over 400 schools using the same product.
Will this system comply with all aspects of the Cannabis Regulatory Commission rules requirement?
It will.
Now, in the conditional use ordinance, as we've already alluded to, condition C five requires us to submit a security plan approved by the police department to demonstrate how the facility will maintain effective security and control of the operations. Now, that approval has been granted by the police department, correct?
Yes, it has.
The ordinance also requires the plan include information set forth in sub-patsegrees A through E. I don't want to read all of those. I'll just ask you, does our plan include all of the information required in that section of the witness?
It does.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Allen, I just had a couple of brief questions, if I may. I understand as part of your application, you have said that you're trained dispensary agents. All agents will be direct employees of Cotton Mountain Dispensary, retired, running the police officers, and present running the police officers will be given priority for all agent openings? Is that something that you're going to be directing? You'll be doing the hiring?
I will not be handling, I'm handling the electronics side of the security.
Okay. And to that end, will there be metal detectors at the entrance?
I don't have our plans at this point. Have you seen anything with your?
No, I haven't seen anything.
So at this point, we don't have metal detectors going into the, into the facility? Under, how many of these dispensaries have you had under your purview?
I have done, this will be my first globally. Our Sonic Troll franchise, no one has done one in the state.
Okay. And I guess, I just have a question as to whether or not other dispensaries are facilitating metal detectors at their entrances, point of entrance?
What I would like to suggest, Madam Chair, is since we'll be returning your specifying, let me get you an answer to that.
That's fine, David.
Since it doesn't relate to the specific conditions, but we'll get you an answer.
I appreciate that.
This is, this is new for, for, for most of us, other than people who are doing it under state. Yeah, so we'll get you an answer on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Allen?
Who is going to be controlling the outside of the building as far as security, people using on the site? Who's going to control that?
I don't have the answer for that. I think that would be somebody else on the...
Yeah, we'll get another one of our witnesses, yep. Thank you. So if there are no other questions for Mr. Allen, I'm going to bring up Susanna Short, who's going to answer both of the board members' questions that haven't been answered. And any other questions, if you may, that are related to this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Can you introduce yourself?
Sure, Susanna Short. I've been a cannabis industry consultant here in New Jersey for a little over five years. One of the things that I have done is I'm the founder of the cannabis, New Jersey Cannabis Trade Association, that is open to all permanent operators in the state. So I do have a specific answer to your question, Madam Chair, about the other local dispensaries that are using metal detectors. And to my knowledge, none of them are using that as part of their security protocols. But there are, of course, extensive security protocols that they're all undertaking, many of which are prescribed by the New Jersey Administrative Code, Chapter 1730. And one of them is that all of these camera systems need to be accessible to the regulatory authority. The Cannabis Regulatory Commission has to be able to have access to go in and look at all of the camera feeds at any time. And that, that access can be made available to your local police department as well if that is something that's desired, but that's worked out directly through your local police department. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, like Damian stated, this is, this is all, this is all new territory to all of us. So, you know, obviously, I'm going to try to be as proactive as I can for the, for the town and the folks in the town to, you know, protect them, and obviously to protect all the employees and things. And I don't, I don't, I don't know what the, you know, Philadelphia's the Wild West right now. Every time we turn the news on, you know, you're hearing horror stories about gun violence and everything. And obviously, this is, I've been on this board for 20-plus years. This is the first type of application where I have felt even the slightest need for metal detectors for gun violence. So I just have some trepidation about it. And just more the question, I mean, I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, or I'm not trying to dictate or mandate, but it's just something, when you turn the news on, you see all this crazy stuff going on, and, you know, I just, I don't, I don't pretend to know. It's just a question I wanted to put out there, so it's just...
I appreciate the question, and I commend you for being educated yourself and, you know, to all of you. There are some federal laws that we need changed, particularly around banking reforms. And tomorrow, actually, in the Assembly, New Jersey State Assembly Oversight Committee, there is a hearing that will be, will be addressing a bill that deals with something called 2ADE. I don't want to get too far off of the, you know, the agenda for tonight, but banking reforms are front and center for the industry because of the, the location of cash, you know, on premises. Of course, it is all altered, it is all kept, you know, there's limited access areas. As you, so eloquently put it, Madam Chair, the priority is for us to protect our employees, right? The general public, our customers who are, who are coming into the space. And, you know, so, so every precaution is being taken. You know, similar to a bank, I don't think banks, banks don't have metal detectors as, you know, as far as I know. So, and I'm not an expert, who would say why it works or doesn't work. It's a concern, and we need some laws changed to really wrap our heads around the cash a little bit better. But in New Jersey, we've really managed it very well, and that's in part to, in the relationships with local law enforcement, as well as the state regulatory authority.
Well, I met with Chief Sam Polsky this week, and we discussed it, you know, and, you know, that really didn't come up. It was just a concern of me personally. And I'm sure if Chief Sam Polsky sees the need for warrants or something, I'm sure you folks would comply to that. It's just, it's new territory, and not, not trying to be adversary in any way, shape, or form, but it's a question that bears asking, in my opinion.
For sure. It has to be a partnership with the local municipality at every level of government. So I'm familiar with, with how that works.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure if we got an answer to your question.
No.
Partially, because I don't recall exactly what your question was.
Okay, my question is, since you're in a regulated industry and you'll be operating a retail business that is under those laws, I'm assuming there's federal and state regulations that you'll need to follow?
The federal regulations, don't do it.
Oh, yeah.
There are no federal regulations. I'm working, I'm working on that. But yes, absolutely, state, state-level regulations, there are 325 pages of them. And, you know, they go into very specific detail in some cases. You, I believe, were inquiring about the audit process?
Yeah, my question is, how do, how, how will the company ensure that this establishment is meeting those regulations, aside from a state inspector, or whatever they're called, walking in to find a bunch of discrepancies? Or findings? So do you have an internal audit process that, and how often will that be conducted on this establishment?
Okay. So it is sort of tied to the state's process to a degree. So at once the license is formally awarded, you know, and it has its annual status, the state, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission assigns an individual, it's called a field monitor, who is sort of the liaison with the compliance department for the regulator. And the, before being deemed operational, right? So you might have a license, but you're not permitted to open doors until you've, you know, gone through, through a number of steps in this checklist. And one of those is to submit standard operating procedures that need to be, you know, approved by the state authority. Those standard operating procedures include a whole slew of stuff around, you know, training employees in these, in these SOPs, in these standard operating procedures. SOPs run the gamut from everything for how do you turn the handle when you open the door to go into a room, you know, to something about waste disposal, to things about waste disposal, et cetera. And record keeping is also required by the state. There need to be extensive SOPs around record keeping. So in all of that, there are, you know, standards that are prescribed by the state that the local, or that the entity itself needs to comply with. And there is a compliance officer who will ensure that those SOPs are being followed so that if there were, you know, a check from, a random check, which is prescribed in statute even, that they can come in and just randomly audit you, or, you know, see your operations. They're able to see what's going on in the cameras at any time, right? So that you're, you're maintaining compliance throughout. But there's going to be other audit processes around accounting, around receipts, right? There'll be some remuneration to the borough here as far as collecting that municipal tax. All of that has to follow, you know, SOPs that are subject to, to audit. So it's a highly regulated industry, and I would say there are, you know, audits that are in some ways ongoing on even a daily basis almost, but a formal audit process is something that, you know, a compliance officer would, would, would kind of sense, you know, if, if something needed to happen outside of the sector.
Is the compliance officer with the company you're talking about, or outside of?
It would be outside of.
So you will not be conducting internal audits?
So when you get internal audits?
So, so like in other industries that are regulated, like, say, metal device or pharma, there are, companies have, I guess you could say, quality P...
QA, QC, right.
QA, QC, and they will manage that, they will manage their facilities, or they'll do internal audits to ensure that regulations are being met. And if they're not being met, then actions are taken from within the corrective actions or whatnot to fix those issues. That's why I'm asking the question.
All right, I understand the question better now. Thank you. So that type of audit, we see more at the cultivation or manufacturing portions of the supply chain here in the industry, not really at the retail level?
So to dovetail on Ms. Dodd's question just a little bit here, you folks do understand that you have a license, the license is renewed yearly, and your license would be able to be suspended for non-compliance if the outside entity or anyone, you know, that were doing an audit were to find that you were not in compliance?
Yes, there's subject to fines, subject to suspensions, subject to revocation, there's, you know, a whole bunch of triggers that could, any, any number of bad things can happen if you're not in compliance, for sure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next witness is Mr. Clary, just a brief testimony.
I have one more asking question is, who is the enforcement of keeping people on the outside from not utilizing the cannabis or loitering? Who, how does that occur?
So I'm just calling back.
You're not operating, but...
Sure.[1712.62] Correct. Ms. Robyn.
Welcome back.
Hi.
Did you miss me? I missed you.
So, the security personnel would be typically monitoring both the exterior of the building as well as the interior space. And there would be likely more than one based on the, you know, the location of different entrances and such, but that would be within our responsibility to make sure that no one is consuming on site, that there is no loitering, compliance with all of the, you know, the local regulations that will be handled by our security personnel, who, as we previously said, would be, you know, local retired law enforcement or active and experienced.
What are the penalties for consuming on site?
What are the penalties for consuming on site?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if someone were going to be, I mean, typically, there's signs posted that say you can't.
Well, what are the penalties? What's the return? You stop because...
Right.
Obviously, the cop's not going to say, "Oh, bust me here for having it."
Right, right. So, the work with, I mean, if there was something that were, that, these are trained, these are highly trained, you know, professionals and experienced folks who are able to diffuse situations, who are able to move people along, who are able to stop things from happening, I can't give you the script that they would be following, you know, right now, but they would know if and when they did have to call in local law enforcement. You know, I think over a consumption issue, they'd be able to handle that pretty quickly and effectively.
That's something that Mayor and I have a meeting about today. You know, we're going to have to massage all this stuff, and we're going to have to put things in place as we go.
Right now, as it stands, my understanding would be it'd be a zoning violation, but the zoning officer has every right to contact the state that they're not in compliance with their approvals, which are part of their licensing process. So, they agreed that no consumption, no loitering, all that, zoning violation is issued, and it would be more than appropriate for the zoning officer to let the state know that the licensee is not complying with the conditions of approval.
So, the penalty is actually the end...
The zoning officer's job, not police officer's job?
Well, it's the, number one is the applicant's responsibility as they testify. If they are not handling the responsibility, it comes to where of the borough, the borough zoning officer would be that first line, not to go out there and actually stop the loitering, but to enforce the conditions of approval. And I think they would have some assistance on the state level with the Cannabis Commission. Cannabis Commission.
Yes, Cannabis Regulatory Commission, CRC, yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, it's in our best interest to make sure that no one is consuming, because we're the ones who will suffer the penalty of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian? Can you introduce yourself, please?
Uh, yes. Brian, oh, excuse me. Brian Cleary from the Pettigrew.
Just call your last name.
Cleary, C-L-E-A-R-Y.
And what is your capacity?
Engineer for the applicant.
Thank you.
Then are you a professional engineer licensed in the state of Jersey in good standing?
Yes.
Qualified as such as an expert engineer for a land use board in New Jersey?
Yes.
Can you briefly review the existing conditions using the aerial survey as you see fit? Now, you don't have a microphone over there, so you got to speak loudly to Mr. Box. This is...
I can take one of those off.
Okay, you do that. Never mind. My folks.
That'll be a few mic.
I have. I'm a bag of cheese.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary.
Okay. So, the property, I'm sure we all know it, it's directly across the street from the municipal building behind the Cooper Urgent Care Center near the intersection of Clements Bridge Road and Black Horse Pike. Currently, there are two accesses to the property from Clements Bridge Road, the main access to the parking area in front of the building, and then there's a secondary access to the rear that acts as somewhat of an extension of St. Clair Road and also a loading area. There's a third access, just an ingress from Black Horse Pike, an easement is dedicated to allow access from Black Horse Pike. You enter the site, there's parking on both sides, right and left, until you hit the dead end at the end of the parking lot, where you would have to turn around because it's ingress only. There's also additional parking on the south side of the building, which is where the trash enclosure is currently located. The entrance to the building is at the southwest corner, and the loading door is at the northeast corner of the building. That's really it for the site layout.
Okay. Now, the conditional use ordinance, Section 26E4E, requires the retailer to have one parking space for every 300 square feet across the floor area. Do we comply?
Uh, yes. On the overall property, there are 72 spaces, and we're required 30.
And that assumes, 30 assumes that you count all the square footage in the building, not just the retail portion?
Correct.
Okay. The ordinance also requires that, or states that no cannabis establishment shall be located within 200 feet of a house of worship, school, or daycare. Do we comply with that?
Correct. The closest of those three uses I could find is a church at the corner of Knight and Clements Bridge Road, which is about 460 feet away, so more than double the setback requirement.
And is it correct that we're going to return for site plan approval as I mentioned earlier this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Can you give everyone just a brief overview of the changes that you'll be proposing, that you'll show all the plans that we'll submit? A preview, so to speak.
Some of the changes we'll be showing, we'll be showing, or updated lighting along the building, increased landscaping throughout as part of Mr. Box's letter, restriping, pavement improvements. Generally, we'll be addressing basically everything within the last section of the Board Professionals Review Letter, Items 1 through 11, with site plan submission.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know any other questions here, Mr. Cleary, Madam Chair.
No, I think we'll defer that to site plan.
The only thing I just want to tell a brief is, you can review the direction of that one-way drive aisle going onto Black Horse Pike with, I understand that you have Andy Ferrando of Shropshire and Andrew Ferrando of Shropshire. And is that really the best direction, and what is controlling that? Is that D O T access permit or, I believe it's unsigned right now.
We will look into that. I just went through the site today, and the only sign I saw was at the dead end of the internal parking lot. It's not even a standard do not enter sign, and it's a small little placard that tells you not to enter.
There's actually, there's actually a sign, the do not enter sign, that's from, that's from the old CVS building. We had the CVS back there. You were only allowed to enter it northbound on the Black Horse Pike. You could enter it and get into the CVS parking lot one way, but you could not exit there. There is also a no left turn sign presently on the site at the Clements Bridge Road exit where the Cooper meets the front of your property. So, there's already a do not, a no, a no left turn sign there presently. Now, the other exit that we're talking about goes out to St. Clair. So, that's another point of traffic that we have to talk about. I've been to the site numerous times, obviously, and predicated on the time of the day, the traffic on Clements Bridge Road is just, it's ridiculous. And I don't know with Andrew, I've known Andrew from Shropshire, I've been here many times, does a good job, but I don't know how many cars were speeding, trying to exit and make left turns out of that exit as well. There would also be availability to, if you wanted to drive your egress cars out the back of the property down St. Clair, make the right on St. Clair, that's going to hit Plaza, then you're going to make the right on Plaza, and then you'll make the right onto the Black Horse Pike. That would be a path of least resistance for sure, because there's just, it's just a right, a right, and a right. You're, I'm just like, I guess...
So, I'm just going to interject, so we don't have to get the answers right now.
Right. We're laying it out there, so...
The two points is the limitation of making a left on the Clements Bridge Road, especially in the busy times. Also, having enough egress and also concern about the turnaround, coming to the dead end parking and having all these people trying to all turn around and function is of a concern.
Yes.
And then also, like I was saying, Madam Chair, concern about egressing down to a residential street and residential properties. We would prefer, when we do a site plan, if you evaluate whether you control to keep people on Clements Bridge Road and Rule 168 versus cutting through neighborhood streets.
All right, we'll take a little...
Again, just want to tell a great man ask.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Two other questions that I'd be glad to ask you. Number one, will this cannabis establishment comply with the parking regulations in the ordinance?
Yes.
And will the signage comply with the sections in the ordinance regulating signage?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Cleary.
One more thing, Steve. Just a question. Obviously, the 7-Eleven and the CVS, you know, that's been 100 years ago. Who would regulate if we were able to turn that one-way in to it, in out, onto the Black Horse Pike?
I think...
Is that D O T or is that us?
Well, first of all, we had to find out, and we're going to ask, we're at the site plan, any controlling easements? We don't know what is controlling that drive.
Right.
So, that was one question.
Just saying, that's...
Is it already regulated, one way or the other?
Right. That's a right-hand turn onto the Black Horse Pike. We're not going to run them through St. Clair, we're not going to run them through Plaza, we're just running through the back of their own property. If we, obviously, have to widen.
Yeah, they have to demonstrate all their easements.
Yep.
And how their site circulation.
Yep.
And it'll be subject to the board review.
Yeah. That's my biggest problem with this whole site is just that.
And if it has the capacity, it depends on how it's going to operate. The operation is the part that's unclear, and they have to return for site plan, submission, application, and then ask for the approval.
Homework. Homework. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. Our next witness is Tim Hogan, our architect, be very brief, just to talk a little bit about building changes as a preview again. Mr. Hogan, can you call us by any more voice?
I'm Timothy Hogan, I'm principal architect for Pettigrew.
Okay, so you're the project architect, licensed architecture in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
Using Exhibit 83, can you just give everyone a preview of the building changes that we propose?
So, what we have here, as everyone's aware, is an old CVS building, pretty understated, simple building. We're looking to take a responsible environmental approach to the changes in this building, using sustainable materials, and also only use, doing targeted minimal changes to the building to lessen the impact of any vehicles on-site or construction. So, it's re-skinning the building and adding some design features, reconstituted reclaimed wood, and then introducing natural plant materials, both as part of the roof, as a roof garden, and within these exhibit windows created by these wooden planes.
Okay. Do they have any questions about the building upgrades that we're proposing?
I have one question. Roof garden, that is only for aesthetics, not more aesthetics.
No one would be going up there. By me, it's just, the garden, it would be almost like flower box at the edges, aesthetic garden.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. That was it. We just wanted to give you a little bit of a...
Thank you, Andrew. Oh, John, we said hello.
I'm going to ask Andrew Ferrando, a traffic engineer, to step up, please. Mr. Ferrando, you're a traffic engineer with Shropshire, correct?
Yes.
And qualified as an expert in such for cannabis land use board?
Before over 100 boards throughout the state and before this board.
Okay. And is it correct that your office analyzes the traffic impact of this conditional use on the surrounding roadway network?
Yes, we did preliminary analysis that would be equivalent, needed for conditional use. We looked at the surrounding roadway network, we looked at the access circulation on site. We evaluated some traffic counts that have been done by county and state. We recognized exactly what the board has set up for me already, that there's traffic in the area, that the signal at Clements Bridge and the Black Horse Pike also has some queuing. There's driveways on site that sometimes do get blocked by that queuing. We understand that. We haven't done the in-depth counts and analysis that will be done in site plan.
Great. Did you also evaluate parking?
We looked at the parking. There's 72 parking spaces. We looked at the parking requirement. We're well within the parking requirement, so at this point, we meet parking requirements. We also looked at some of the IT demand, and that falls within the parking that's available as well.
With that, any progress?
Not at this time, again. We will provide an extensive traffic study with counts and evaluation of those queues, and the traffic signal will be back for some.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody?
One more question. Is there an IT standard for cannabis retail?
There is a standard, but because this is new to everyone, there's not a lot of data points at this time.
Okay.
So, as in New Jersey, it's new to us here, it's new to the country. There were some counts, I believe there's four, five, six counts that were done in Colorado and Oregon. Obviously, they weren't out ahead of the rest of the country, they have some points. I'm not sure the compatibility of the Colorado count and Oregon count to the New Jersey count, so we have to use the available data.
I was just curious, because I've not seen it yet.
It is there. I believe it's a 12 land use code in the IT. There is a category for it.
Were there other counts in California?
There wasn't yet, not done by IT. That doesn't mean there isn't facilities, it just hasn't come in and been processed by IT so that it can go out for use.
Mr. Ferrando for the board, maybe for the public, IT Institute of Traffic Engineers, how do these counts get logged and recorded?
Sure. Traffic engineering firms like ours go back and count after a facility is operational. We go count the driveways and watch the traffic in-cube and out of the driveways. We get the total number of trips. We look at the size of the facility by different categories, sometimes it's by person, by, if it's a house, it's by, you know, bedroom sometimes, by numbers, single-family units. There's different categories. In this case, it would probably be by thousands, a thousand square foot, how many trips.
But it's actually like a voluntary, voluntary data collection by members of that group, the Institute of Traffic Engineers.
Correct. Like, convenience store with gas is one category. That would be wall-up. Our firm did a lot of accounts for wall-ups, convenience with gas, and submitted them to IT for their use. And many of those counts that are being used by IT throughout the country were done by our firm for convenience with gas.
But you just, if I could just, you know, reiterate that, my biggest concern with this site is the traffic. The, as you well know, I'm sure you've been out there, there's a bus stop there. It is the main throughway for our pedestrians right there. I am very concerned with cars staging up, trying to sneak out, trying to push out onto the Clements Bridge Road, because I will tell you, I was there again today, they don't want to let their mother out, okay? It doesn't matter who you are, you could, you know, you're just like, you're scooching out, scooching out, scooching out. And my fear is that people are going to be staging up, trying to get out, they're going to have the sidewalks blocked, they're going to have pedestrians walking around cars at a bus stop at a busy time of the day. I mean, it's the main throughway for our town, and that's my concern. I don't get paid for sitting here. I'm here to protect the residents and to help make our community as safe as it can be. And if I have people that are aggressive and trying to, they're mad, they're trying to get out, nobody's going to let them out. I really want to see what you folks can come up with as far as trying to get that traffic directed away from our main walkways and our bus stop for our residents. That's my main concern with this entire, you guys have a conditional use, the state said so. So, it's not like, that's within my purview to say no. It is within our purview to make this site as safe and, you know, and as nice as it can be for the residents of our towns. That, this is my main concern with this site.
And we are sensitive, and this is the center of your town.
Yep.
There's a lot of traffic rate at the center of the town, you have a signaling, you have the municipal building, everything is centered here.
There's not 50 feet between the light and your first driveway space.
I'm taking good notes, and at site plan, we come back and we will give you that detailed information. We'll look at the access, we'll look at the direction of the...
I'll have to talk to Steve, and just try to work out a good plan, okay?
Right.
Thank you, Damian. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew. Our last witness is Sammy Gresta, our planner. Mr. Gresta?
My name is Sammy Gresta. I'm with the Pettigrew. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared in front of numerous boards in the capacity of planner throughout the state. I have not appeared in front of this board, though. This will be my first time in front of a board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two questions, Mr. Gresta. The first question is, this is a conditional use, as I stated. What is a conditional use?
So, a conditional use is something in the code that gives us permission in a certain zone to apply this use. Under that, we have to meet certain conditions that are outlined.
In your opinion, does this application satisfy all conditions set forth in Section 395 2064?
Yes, it does. I think we've addressed all the conditions. There are one or two within the code that will be addressed during site plan, and we can adequately address, do we have our site plan prepared, but they will be addressed.
What are the conditions of those?
The one is, we did talk about parking, however, we have not had a site plan review. And there is another one in there under development standards. Minimum of five acres, which we meet that. It's just basically the additional testimony regarding that. Under the development standards, it's like a...
E2?
Correct, yes.
Class 1 through 4, shot of minimum land area, five acres.
Correct.
We're class 1, so that's not applied, right?
That does not apply, though. It's correct.
And as for parking, which I think is the other standard, we testified that we need parking.
We have our testimony on that. Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Mr. Gresta, any questions?
So, thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, that concludes our plan.
I'd like to just clarify. So we did hear testimony that there are existing parking spaces, subject to existing parking spaces that currently exist. I would just ask one of your witnesses, any proposed site improvements will bring you anywhere near reduction to what is required by the ordinance?
I can represent, after speaking to our witnesses earlier, that although we may lose some spaces to make some of the improvements at this board once, we won't even approach the minimum, excuse me, the minimum requirement of 30. We have more than double that now.
So we have existing stuff, and you're not going to get anywhere near reducing down to 30, so you do meet the condition of having the required parking under the conditional.
Correct. And if I'm wrong, and I won't be wrong on this, I'll be wrong on other things. We would have to apply for conditional use variance. That's not going to happen. We are clear.
Thank you, Mr. Luca. With that, I'm going to do a 10-minute recess. And then, because I want to give the public an opportunity to speak at length or whenever they have questions on. So let's do a 10-minute recess for everybody to go power those and take a walk for a second, and we'll be back in session at 8:20. All right, folks. Thank you very much. Joyce, are we ready to go back in session? I'd like to call the meeting back into session at 8:20. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public. And anyone wishing to speak on this application, and this application only, just please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and be heard. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
My name is Gary Beebe. I live at 39 Plaza Place in Rami.
Yep.
Been there almost my entire life, along with most of my parents and everything else. So we're concerned in the neighborhood of this dispensary and any variance that allows this dispensary. So I've created a petition that I'd like to submit that has names and addresses of almost every resident in this area, St. Clair, Plaza Place, Lindsay Avenue, some Hartford, Washington Avenue. So we're concerned about traffic, parking, pedestrian traffic with everybody outside of the building, potential crime rate. I'm not an expert in traffic, as the gentleman here was. But if you look at the studies that are out there for the medical marijuana or recreational marijuana, which you, if you study, you really need to separate those, right? Because there's a difference, right? In medical marijuana, most of the traffic issues are almost nil, because the population of that is only about 1.8% of the people going for marijuana. The rest is RMDs, right? I'd like to submit a study done by an independent company that looked at California, Colorado, Oregon, and Washington. And they did that at a zip code level. What a lot of the studies do is they lump everything together, right? So this independent company looked at it at a zip code level for where it was, the traffic prior to a dispensary opening, and then after a dispensary opening, and specifically only recreational facilities, right? And what they found was failed traffic crashes increased 5.9%, right? Now, that may not happen here, right? It's a small residential area. But that gives us concern for what's going on in our neighborhood, right? If you ever look at what's going on on Plaza Place, and as you said, it backs up on Clemens Road. So what do they do? They come through Lindsay, they come through Washington, Plaza Place, and out to go down the Black Horse Pike. That's constant, all the time, right? Now, the people that want to come to this facility, right, they're going to come from various areas, right? So they're going to come down Washington Avenue from the other towns, right? They're going to come up. Black Horse Pike come in through Plaza Place and St. Clair, and that's an issue, because that's a dead-end street, right? Parking, they could be parking along our roads, right? I suppose the overflow was in their parking lot. Addressed crime, hopefully crime doesn't increase. But since 2018, LA has stated that crime on a recreational facility, just people attacking those, had to increase 10%, right? If you look at property value, most people will study and say property value in a lot of places where campus goes, property value goes up, right? But not necessarily. You've got to break it down as to where these facilities are being placed in those other states that have these facilities, where it's already been a lower property value. So the only place for that to do is to go up, right? We're concerned about how long the facility's open. Nine o'clock is a long period of time. We have children on St. Clair. We have children on Plaza Place and in the surrounding areas, right? If you drive around and look at the facilities in the other local towns, you'll notice there's lines out the door. There's 50, 100 people in line, you know? And I understand that, you know, their proposal is that they can only let so many people in at a time, and that's good, you know, based on security. And I believe that, you know, the rep and company will adhere to all the rules and regulations that they have to. But have you policed the outside area? And you've raised that concern. You drive by, go over to Salwar's in Defford, and I can smell it, right? They don't manufacture it there neither. Delmar is different, right? And you can smell it there too. You can stand across the street. There's nothing to stop an individual, once they leave their property, which they're responsible for, right, to be sitting on St. Clair, to be sitting on Plaza Place, and do whatever they do, right? We don't want that in our neighborhood with children around. School's only, I don't know if it's 1,000 feet or more, but it's not that far away, right? So that's our concerns. And this is the study that they did. So, yeah, I hope you take that in consideration as you look to do this and approve it or not.
Well, I want you to understand and know that, I guess, you've been sitting here for the entire meeting, and I have mirrored many of your concerns, and I trusted the staff at Cotton Mountain. They're going to do everything that they can to address the concerns that I have, this board has, and that you have. But I can also defer to our solicitor with the explanation of the conditional use variance is not within our purview. We basically, and David, I'll defer to you, but we, it's not within our purview to say they cannot open this facility. That's not within our purview. What is within our purview is to perfect a nice site plan and to try to get all of your concerns, all of our concerns, addressed to the best of our ability, to the best of their ability. I think we've spent an hour and a half talking about them, and I think they have a clear understanding of what this board is expecting them to do, to perfect the site plan, and were for them to get the site plan approval. But the conditional use variance of this application is not within our purview to deny.
And Madam Chair, to ask you, it's not a variance, so they're asking for a conditional use approval.
Yeah, well, this is.
To make sure the record is clear, that there's no variance being sought, is that right? They're asking to, for this board to acknowledge.
I guess it'll go by your review letter. It says variance.
I know, but it's, there is a difference between a conditional use variance, which is that you don't meet one or more of the conditions, where you're asking for relief. This is strictly an application for a conditional use approval.
Yep.
And it's, it's a little nuanced, but I think it's important.
Yes.
It's already been approved by the state and are.
The conditional use is, they have licensure from the state, but the conditional use, I'm sorry, sir, I'm taking some of your.
No, that's fine.
But the conditional use is on a local level, which is in the boroughs level.
Right.
So that's why we have coordinates that is pretty prescriptive on exactly what those conditions are. Our job here this evening, at least for this part of the process, is only for conditional use consideration and approval, is do they meet all the conditions? Then they have to return for site plan, and they have to address all the other concerns, parking, circulation, traffic flow, all those type of things.
And to be clear, will they be required to renotice for site plan? Or, I'm sure this gentleman and these folks are going to want to come back.
Yeah. So we will get notified again?
Well, what I was hoping, I'm sorry, sir, was that the board can make an announcement that the site plan will be heard on October 26th, if that's available.
We'll know about that.
And if it's not.
Yeah.
Then we'll.
We'll have to renotice.
Renotice, no problem.
Yeah, we'll need to renotice, because we already have some.
No problem.
Yeah, we've got some things on the docket for next month.
For the 26th, for October.
We're trying to get this done for you, because I know your clock started on August 1st, as far as this is concerned.
Understood.
We're trying to get this done, get the letter of mayor and council, so you can move forward.
Do we know what the November date is? Yeah, I'll give notice, but do we know that this is, with Thanksgiving, I just didn't know.
I don't know.
Okay, we'll talk to Joyce about that. Thank you.
They have the opportunity to make their submission within the timeline. Let's not say that they would not be heard, not go over, go offensive on the application.
Yeah, we'll see how things go.
Yeah, so we're not saying.
Well, we'll get notice regardless of the notice.
Yes, whenever you're, whenever you make your application, whatever's appropriate, whether it's ready to come to the board.
Yeah, these folks have had it for an hour and a half. They, everyone will want to hear the site plan portion of it. I want to make sure you know when that portion is going to be heard.
I know you addressed the trash, and you see a lot of trash from the smoke jobs that are all over the place.
Well, that's a pet peeve of mine, and I met, my hand to God, I met with mayor today. I sent him a picture of the one behind the Med Express. That is a pet peeve of mine, because there's no excuse. There's no excuse for the, just the total disregard for people's neighborhoods and the blighting of trash. I mean, I mean, the code officials have to step up, and I had a meeting with mayor about that today. I don't care if I have to drive around myself and take pictures of 20 trash enclosures, but we're going to start citing people, because it's not fair. It's not fair to have waste disposal blowing in the breeze, and we're disgusting.
I guess the last question was, addressed about the trash, when you said the marijuana trash, if it's all prepackaged, what waste is there?
So, I guess, you have to go to the microphone.
Sir, repeat that question. I'm sorry.
Well, we were talking about trash earlier. You said the marijuana trash would be picked up on a scheduled basis.
Correct.
So if it's prepackaged, what marijuana, what marijuana waste is there?
So marijuana that is not being used is actually going to undergo this process, and that is marijuana that's been tested and has failed the test. So we cannot sell, we have to dispose of it, and that's when we, that's when we give it out.
So the packages are being opened within the facility tested, or?
No, we have a testing facility that we use, so that will not be done outside.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Thanks, Gary. I appreciate you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter, this matter only?
See, I know it all. I have a couple of questions. Gary, Mr. Beebe, goes on. Typical RV 35 Plaza Place. Again, been there most of my life. Cannabis waste. Mr. Holcomb, if some of the product isn't approved, why would it even be shipped if it's tested in an outside location? You know, it seems.
I'm going to go down that to my cannabis advisor.
Got to come back up to the mic.
I'm sorry, I wear my jacket. It's freezing. Okay. So you're absolutely right. It wouldn't be. There are state regulations that I believe my colleague was referring to around waste disposal. Some of them apply at earlier portions of the supply chain. So a cultivator or a manufacturer would be the one who's doing the packaging, and then has to send it out to an approved state testing lab that will, you know, run the appropriate tests. And if it doesn't pass those appropriate tests, it's never making it to this facility.
Okay, okay.
So it would be honestly cannabis waste that might occur at a retail facility would have to be some bizarre thing, like somebody, you know, dropped something and somehow breaks or something like that, and then therefore they have to put it into the container, and a third party comes and removes that. And it's all, everything is tracked through a state system. It's called a seed-to-sale tracking system. This is what exists to prevent diversion from, you know, to the non-regulated industry.
Okay.
And so when it's a little teeny tiny baby plant, it gets a number on it, you know, and that we can follow it all the way through until it gets to a consumer. And so if we can't account for it, then, you know, there's a problem. So we need to be able to account for it all the way through.
Very well. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
I appreciate everybody's attention towards onsite security. Somebody could park along St. Clair, a user. Who's responsible for enforcement there? Is it local PD?
Most likely, anything on the borough streets would be local police department.
Okay, okay. I did meet with Chief Sampolsky this week, and he has met with his entire staff, and they are going to be very proactive in this. They realize our concerns, they have concerns, but they feel that they have the capacity, you know, to be able to handle this without a problem, you know? And I met with him and Joyce and myself, we sat for about an hour and talked about different things. And again, it's all due to everybody, people driving around under the influence. I mean, it's, we don't know. I mean, but the law enforcement agencies in this town are absolutely, positively on board with being dedicated to protecting the residents of our town against any, you know, ill results that might come from this facility.
Okay, okay. Another question, probably for the Pettit Group and the owners. St. Clair is essentially a dead-end street. I'm sure some of my neighbors would love to hear, is there any potential in site plan phase 2, close St. Clair to limit traffic from Plaza Place and St. Clair into the facility? I know that it limits your ingress and egress of customers.
That's something that they can do. That's something will have to be done through mayor and council.
Okay.
Mayor and I spoke about some things about making certain, I mean, we made the, back in the day when the children were having issues, when they built the walla, we made that street behind the walla one-way, okay? I was president of the walla at the time, and it was just like kids were darting in between cars and things. So that is something that has to come from mayor and council, not the applicant. They cannot do that.
Okay. I think you were saying, close the driveway.
Yeah, close the driveway.
Yes.
That would be some of it's coming up from the site plan.
Sure, yeah.
Because they have to demonstrate the, their access patterns. We were already related that we have concerns with traffic going to the residential streets. Also, they have to demonstrate what rights, just because something's paved to the end of St. Clair, doesn't mean it was ever approved to be paved in the end of St. Clair.
But.
So just because it exists doesn't mean it's lawful. So that's something that they're going to have to trust from site plan.
When I leave my house and drive up St. Clair to Clemens Road, I'm trespassing on their lock.
So that's something they're going to have to demonstrate. What are the rights? What is permitted? And whether is law, is it lawful, permitted to prove that they can utilize these type of accesses, and all that will be at segment.
And again, the Pettit Group, the green roof on the building, is it just like a facade of a green roof? Or is there an actual reduction in impervious area? Because we do have flooding in a rain event on St. Clair, and if that is a sizable square footage of green roof, it would help reduce the flooding.
Yeah, it's, right now, it's very conceptual, and it would just be almost a layer visible. It's not going to be very deep.
Okay, just hoping anybody will leave me the flood issue. Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, Tim. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter?
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak at this time, I make a motion to close the public portion.
Motion, Mr. Arfley, seconded by Ms. Kusch, all in favor, close the public portion.
All right.
Anyone opposed? Public portion is now closed. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have nothing further, Madam Chair, before the board deliberates, I would just remind that we're real here just for the conditional use, and the question before the board is whether the applicant has demonstrated that it meets all the conditions set forth in section 26 of your ordinance. And I certainly endeavored to go through each condition one by one, and I think I did, so I believe the answer is yes. In this case, we look forward to getting the conditional use approval, going back to the drawing board, and listening, and addressing these concerns and coming back for site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Are there any questions from the board, for professionals, or from the applicant, before we entertain a motion? Okay, Mr. Rowan.
Okay, this is, as Mr. Del Duque succinctly stated, this is an application solely for approval of the conditional use of a cannabis dispensary at 10 East Clemens Bridge Road. Your job as a board is to determine whether the applicant has satisfied the conditions which the Borough has set forth in section 395,006 of our ordinance. If you're satisfied that they satisfy, that they have satisfied, are complying with all those conditions, then you really must approve this. If you find that they didn't satisfy any of the conditions set forth in our ordinance, then you have the ability to deny. You've heard the testimony of several witnesses on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Del Duque, very, did a very good presentation going down our ordinance point by point, taking testimony as to that the applicant is going to comply with our ordinance. There's testimony regarding that the parking is adequate, of course, that is going to be addressed again, as Mr. Box said, an egress, and what we're going to have to do there as far as traffic hours at the, at the time of a final site visit. But we're not involved in that. The only decision you're making is if they're in compliance and they satisfied the conditions, and you would be giving them, you know, approval to start the business if they intend to pretend it's Clemens Bridge Road.
Okay, would that entertain a motion to approve the conditional use?
Make a motion to approve the conditional use.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Offly and a second by Mr. Vinalen Millia Bolko, please.
Chairwoman, please.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vinalen.
Yes.
Mr. Orzonk.
Yes.
Mr. Offly.
Yes.
Ms. Doggs.
Yes.
And Ms. Berg.
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations, let's put my, put my site plan together for us, okay?
Thank you very much. See you soon, thank you.
Very well, thank you, have a nice evening.
We have room two pop houses.
Okay, the next order of business is Good and Welfare.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry.
So, this is an application...
2208. Yep.
And so at my base, we have issued a September 16, 2022 correspondence.
Yes.
In regards to the application, the petition, the site review by Fremont Garden LLC. This is reviewing the submission items received by the Borough and our office, and also dated August 29, 2022. As outlined in our correspondence, we find the application incomplete at this time. We just add forward to accept our recommendation and deem the application incomplete as admitted as of August 29, 2022.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is the endless application 2020, I'm sorry, 2208 incomplete?
I make a motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Offly, seconded by Mr. Orzonk, we have roll call, please. Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vinalen.
Yes.
Mr. Orzonk.
Yes.
Mr. Offly.
Yes.
Ms. Doggs.
Yes.
And Ms. Berg.
Yes.
Okay, next matter of business will be Good and Welfare. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard.
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak this time, I make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Offly, seconded by Ms. Gush, all in favor.
Aye.
Public portion is closed. At this point in time, entertain a motion to...
Question.
You have a question?
Good and welfare.
What's your Good and Welfare question?
When is it going to be over? When a project is almost completed, whose job is it to make sure everything we approved was taken care of?
I can answer part of that question, I may. So if it is a site plan approval, then there is a requirement for bonded improvements, as well as for inspection of certain elements that may not be bonded, but that are material requirements as part of their approval. Our office, as the Borough engineer, is tasked to do those improvements. They, we work very hard with our construction code, office over many years. Unless there is a letter issued by our office that all site improvements, as required from the planning board before, or even anything from the land use board, unless they are completed, they should not get any CEO. If it is an open business and it's improvements and they're already operating, they will not get a CEO or release of any guarantees. There's always some guarantee, even though now it is under the current law, it's much more than it used to be, and it's the state statute. But they should not be released from any of the obligations in this whole other site improvement, you've got, we need to have final inspection, we issue punch lists and everything else. Now, after it's done, they're not operated, they're not operating, after it's done that inspection and performance guarantee, and maybe it's guaranteed release that stipulated by the state statute, after that, the operational side is over on the Borough's code enforcement side. And that's more zoning enforcement, not code enforcement. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Who, so he is, Joe is, to, so it's your responsibility for anything with, for you, correct?
Correct.
So do they come, is it their obligation to come to you, or do you follow up with the, hey, they're this far into this situation, hey, we go out and check?
Oh, we go out and check.
Okay, so...
It's, the application is on the applicant to make proper notifications, because when we...
And a lot of times they don't.
They don't. So we do, as a courtesy to all our clients, all municipal clients, we do rabies. Again, we don't charge for the rabies of the applicant or the Borough, but we're constantly almost in that enforcement mode, because we don't want people doing work without notification. There's not much of a reprimand that we can give them, we can't fine them or anything else, so we can say, don't do it, you know, if you're working, you gotta, you gotta call us. Because if you install something that we don't inspect, we're not going to allow it to be accepted, meaning as a mitigated condition. So if they're very tight and it's not inspected, we can make a deal. So we do everything in our power to make sure that we're able to see everything that is a bondable or a disenterrable.
We've been spoken back in June or July about a new business in town. What do we stand with that? The One and Twenty Bridge Road.
They're not complete yet. They're not complete, their active construction performance guarantees are still held in place, they're not able to do anything.
But they're doing business.
Yeah, they're still in business. I mean, they're...
Right, because they're operating their current business, they're not other area, they're not...
They're using that area.
I will get with the code official, they don't, they should not have a CEO, they should not be operating.
They could use that area, awesome.
Yeah. I was not aware of that, but that is operation of, so they're using a...
They don't care what one of your old...
If any business is using an area that, especially a previously vacant area or part of their business without completing the conditions of the approval, that's an automatic cease and desist, that could be issued by our city officer.
Cease and desist now, it's fall.
Well...
I mean, there's... You know, some people out there, especially in the afternoons.
Yeah, that's true.
They still haven't completed all this, I don't know.
Yeah, they've been, they've been using that all summer.
And that's not fair, we approved it, they're supposed to comply with it, and they're not.
Anything like that, that anybody, any resident, especially any board member sees, that should be brought to the attention, please bring it to my attention, especially if something that keeps...
But now, if it's not you, who's got to enforce that from the local level?
Because they haven't started any site work on that yet. I mean, that's, they still have a lot more...
Stuff to comply with, that you, that we approve, subject to...
That's not, we're here for the option.
I think they're done.
Done doing it, Mike, yeah.
I will look into that.
I mean, like, as far as the local people, who enforces it, like, is it our construction officials?
Well, they shouldn't have a CEO. So right now, and are you telling the local people on the bike?
No, the One and Twenty Bridge and Forest.
I'm thinking of something...
Our shop, between our shop. Build a wall, from the wall.
That's a whole different story.
Yeah, we've talked about this.
All right. I'm thinking, I'm thinking Car Place. I'm thinking something different.
That's a whole...
They, now, because it's not an active application, it's just, I report on that. So they have not received the CEO. There's no CEO in place there, it's an operating business, but there's no CEO in place. So technically, they're operating without a certificate of occupancy. They still have a condition that was part of the approval that they have not met. That's already on the record. I will, I will get with our zoning enforcement officer, has to be brought to fruition. Now, they did go out just recently, they completed several items that were outstanding on the punch list, which were painting, strapping, and a few other minor items. But there is one item very specifically regarding the outdoor patio that had a condition, and they have not met that condition. They will not get a recommendation for a CEO from our office until every condition is met. And we already were on the record with correspondents saying that one, one very specific condition is not being addressed.
Okay, I personally think that we need to somehow, some way, we have applicants come in front of us, and they are given a punch list of things to meet their approval, to get their CEO. I think we need to have some type of a protocol, whereas, you know, every 30 days, every 60 days that we're looking at this, somebody's looking at, I mean, I know bucks, I know bucks part-time, I talked to mayor about this again today. I mean, there's all these things that, you know, we're just letting slide by, letting slide by, and why are we here?
Well, I want to be very, very clear here, under municipal land use law, there is a separation. You are the approving body for land use matters. The performance oversight rests solely on the municipal government.
Absolutely, I don't know.
Right, so I just want to make sure.
I don't know.
So I would say, this board should be like, you have a punch list, or, this board will absolutely get copies of that, but it's not your job to, as a planning board, to report, it's an answer.
Whoever, whoever that person answers to needs to, in my opinion, have a, have a list of, okay, here's what planning and zoning approved on April 15th, and here's, here's the portion of what this business has to do. And, and I want a report back to me as your supervisor by June 15th as to whether they fulfill everything that planning and zoning has required as a condition of their approval. It's just, it's, it's the law.
Can we put a timeframe on the condition that be approved?
Because I mean, if you don't, if I'm doing a project and I don't get my CEO, but I built my shed, so what? You know what I mean?
Or somebody puts a garage, you don't put a driveway in, or whatever.
That, that is, that is enforcement, that's other than enforcement. A condition of approval, rides with some...
So we've got to fix it.
Yes, it is.
Our engineer.
No, I'm sorry, you can come up and I'll be very, very clear on this. We, we inspect the site improvements.
Correct.
If someone does something and they're occupying something without a CEO, without a recommendation from our office, or a CEO, right? Then it's the zoning enforcement officer that can stop them from occupying and enjoying their use if they have not met the conditions. We, we are the ones that give you a very specific letter saying, yes, we have no objection to CEO. If they're using it for a CEO, they should be stopped.
Well, how do we stop them?
By zoning violation. You're using it something without a CEO, your violation ceased. If they do it and they don't stop, then you go through the court process.
Okay. Well, we don't, we don't have a violation of a code that's in our ordinance, because you, once you go to a variance, it goes to the engineer who has to do the inspection.
And, and, we can speak about this offline, but if they do not have a CEO, they're in violation.
They're not the only place.
Well, any place.
Right.
Any place that does not have a CEO cannot be used, because they don't have a lawful right to utilize that improvement. So that's, but we, as the Borough engineer, as the inspector, we're very specific. We will do our inspection and we will not recommend a CEO until all the conditions have been met. And that's, that's...
So, so you're doing inspection and don't recommend it, then who does the report?
Correct, that's what he's... Enforcement, we have, we have no right for enforcement, the Borough, in whatever form.
Like the one Dennis just brought, the driveway, he should be cited right now, because it's been a year for that guy.
That is up, that's up to the zoning officer and the Borough's policies, meaning mayor, everybody.
Oh, it's up to the zoning officer, the Borough's policy, why are we here? We gave him the condition of the driveway to do, for the job, that was part of his condition. So why does the mayor or the zoning officer have the right to say, you know what, I'm a fucking, I'm a fucking...
No, it's, how you enforce is up to the zoning officer. Is there mechanisms to enforce? Absolutely. But we, I can't speak to how someone is supposed to do a zoning officer's enforcement job. You know, that, that is, that is under, their jobs I don't like, but governed by.
I mean, is this an issue countywide?
Yes.
Okay, because I was going to say, hey, I'm sure you're an engineer for other towns.
Yes.
And, so how do they police it, or how do they...
It's, it's actually got worse over, just...
If nobody's here to enforce it, people don't care. Hey, I, I wanted to do, I can't finish it, I...
During, during the, and I, but during the pandemic, we find many more violations, which are certificate of occupancy, we've seen many more people making improvements without getting the proper permits and things like that. There are mechanisms in place to put them on notice that they're in violation, and under our ordinance, you take the municipal court every certain kind of violation. So I would suggest that you keep bringing this to your mayor, as the chief executive officer of the Borough, and seeing, you know, especially if you see something that you know is state used, that you didn't approve.
There's numerous ones that I know we have proposed these, the same with this.
And I, I know, we have, we, every once, every once in a while, we do a check and issue another punch list. So we're constantly on the record, making sure that the Borough knows it's not completed, and also to make sure the applicant knows your site improvements are not completed, you still have to complete all of those things. But there's difference between notification versus something we can't issue a...
The fact of the matter is, we're not, we're not each and watched in town. We don't have that many things that we approve that we shouldn't be able to keep track of at this town, I'm sorry. This isn't NASA. This is, this is, we, we had one application tonight, okay? We, we might have, you know, two applications, maybe, the most we've had in recent years is three, you know what I mean? Maybe, maybe a subdivision, I mean, this isn't, this isn't keeping track of, you know, something insane, like if it was Cherry Hill Township, or this is, this is two, three applications a month, tops. I mean, this, this should not be something that there, there can't be a mechanism put in place with redundancy that it is checked and followed up on and enforced. I mean, it's just, it's just, to me, it's an insult to this board for us to sit up here and volunteer our time, I'm not getting paid here... I'm not getting paid here, I mean, you know, you get paid, but we're not getting paid. Yeah, but I'm saying, we're up here for the sake of the town and for the sake of getting things done the way that, you know, we think it should be done for the benefit of the townspeople. It doesn't benefit me, it doesn't benefit Joe.
And I will say this also, because it's not, it doesn't solely rest on the zoning officer. It also rests on, and we need cooperation, I shouldn't say rests, but we also need cooperation from our construction code officials. Because if they're occupying and they don't have a CO, that's a direct violation of the New Jersey Department of Public Affairs requirements for building permits and occupancies and things like that. So we need everybody as a team all come together and say, you know, where are we gonna start drawing the line on enforcement? Are we gonna be?
Well, I think maybe next meeting, out of respect to this board and the work that they do, we have all the players sitting here, you know, next meeting, and let's address it. Let's figure out a protocol as to how we're gonna handle it. Because we keep kicking the can, we keep kicking the can, and kicking the can, and kicking the can. And before you know it, it's a year, before you know it, it's 18 months, before you know it, they sold the friggin' place. Because that's, that's how advantage came. You know what I mean, we just keep kicking the can down the road, so let's get all the players in the room.
Usually referrals run for the land, not the owners, so they're still the same obligation.
But you know what I'm saying, the owners don't even, the new people don't even know.
I mean, if a permit's not closed down, then I've had it.
Why not?
There's a CO, it's not given out until that permit's closed down.
Correct.
But that's a permit, but like, you know.
If you can send me an email this week or two, and I'll get, I'll get with Nick, and I'll ask if we can have all the players sitting here next meeting, or if we wanna have a special meeting or something.
You're part of the planning board.
A special meeting, it's fine.
Yeah, it would, it would actually be, and if you're gonna have a quorum, you have to advertise it.
That's fine.
But if you don't have a quorum, it just could be a workshop meeting. You know, so if you wanted to have a subcommittee of planning boards, that's not a quorum of the planning board.
We can have four, okay, we can have four.
So you have four members plus any, any couple members from governing body, zoning, construction, and our office, just so we can all be.
That's just a workshop meeting, we don't need, I don't wanna prolong a planning board meeting, but get everybody in the room and get everyone on the same page. Is everybody pointing finger, it goes on my fault, it's fault, it's not my fault, it's fault.
It's interesting, it's an all-in effort, I believe. The way it works, when it does work in the town, it's every step of the way. So it's from anybody that's issuing a building permit, right? Do they have all the conditions to even get a building permit? To getting a CO, right? To release of bonds and things like that. So all the, all the steps have to work together.
Sure.
Otherwise, any one step is when you start having people.
There should be a punch list, there should be something, you know, like when you sell a car, you know, this one has to check off on, do we get, do we have a dollar statement? Do we have a, do we have a sign, release on car backs? Do we have this, do we have the trade tax collect, do we have, it's simple, it's not complicated.
Not.
So we're complicating something that's not complicated.
Can I ask a number of public questions?
God, Bernie, do you have a copy of every variance that we ask?
Not all the time. They tried, Joyce tried, they gave them to us, but they're, like, the two were just approved tonight. We don't, haven't got them to us yet, but since the first of the year.
Did they, did they?
First of the year, I can do it, but I don't know where to get any of the other ones from.
So in other words, in the past, you haven't gotten all of the records?
First of the year. She's got everything, goes from the first of the year, she emails them, her first time's long. Okay, but we haven't seen anything on the Irish Shore. The problem is that they did not do, their building permit is not within code to what they said they were going to do. So they were supposed to come back to the planning board and resubmit their application, which they haven't. In other words, we have no ordinance of an avenue to shut that down for anybody who doesn't have a CO. And it's not that.
You don't have an ordinance, if they don't have a CO, it's a violation, it's a violation of zoning. You would then, and I can help with this, Rod, so you would then notify your construction code officials and the part that doesn't have a CO.
All they do is deal with UCC, if it's not in the UCC.
If UCC very specifically says, if you do not have a CO, you should not occupy the space.
And the problem is, is we have to have the ability as a group to go in there and say, you are closed down, or you have 20 days.
Yes, you have the ability, I think a workshop, I think a workshop would help.
Yes. And it's not just there, it's the residents, residents, it's the sales. What we found has happened is in all the commercial buildings, they're not using realtors. They're transferring between lawyers. And, no, the lawyer, they never even know they're sold. If you would see what was sold in town in the last six months, I'm always would say, oh my God, I know they changed hands. And they're, they're not getting COs, and we're saying, and most of it's caused by the fire marshal.
There are a lot of, there's mechanisms in place.
Yes.
I think a good workshop, so everyone is aware of all the mechanisms. And then also take our direction from, you know, from the mayor and council and both from the board.
And establish accountability.
Yeah.
Let's establish accountability.
Right.
It's as simple as that. We have one or two applications a month, and we can't establish accountability on 15 applications a year that there's something wrong with this town. What's that?
You're not dealing with that.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, but.
Just somebody else can, we can't.
That's right, yeah, the 40-year, the 40-year rule don't work here. If we do it the same way for 40 years, it doesn't mean we do it the same way for the next 40 years.
That's true.
You know, I mean, I think we need to correct the problem, it's been a problem, and. I'm gonna talk with the town, I volunteered, you don't have too many. Steve's gonna get all the parties together, right, and tell me who we gotta get.
Okay.
You gonna send me an email?
Well, I'm gonna say representatives from mayor and council, right?
Just write it up, send me an email.
Well, I'm just gonna say right now, mayor and council, a subcommittee of this planning board, which you guys will determine.
Yep.
Right? Zoning official, and we'll get a construction code. And we'll have to figure out, head's having to come out for that evening, right? At least, at least the head construction official, right? Okay, I'll work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. As always.
I think it's a great idea. I'm pulling a good idea out here.
All right, we're done.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Mr. Offley and Mr. Vanel, all in favor?
Aye.
9:05.